What? Rick said no.
Oh.
All right, the regional school committee meeting is coming into session for March 5th, 2013. Welcome, everybody. This is an atypical format in that we are attending to our agendas and public comments and everything in the first half hour, and then the committee is actually being joined by Dover, Warren Committee, and Sherburne Advisory Committee for the purpose of having an open hearing of the budget. So, everybody is welcome for all of it, but we're gonna probably have all the chairs filled by committee members from the other two, from the finance committees. The school committee has just come out of executive session. That was our first piece, and so now we are in open session at 6:33. Tonight, we will be covering the budget hearing for the FY14 Dover Sherburne Regional School Budget, and we will be doing that further down. I will welcome any public comments. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to capital budget items. The regional school committee has two capital placeholders on the town warrants for both Dover and Sherburne for this year's town meeting. The first one is the middle school air conditioning project, and Richard has kindly worked with DSC-TV, so the local cable, to air... Thank you. This was in our packet, though, right, Chris?
Yeah.
There's no change?
No, there's no change. I just didn't know what every word was.
So, the air conditioning project rationale and the data behind it is all being televised at 8:00 PM weekly for one night or two weeks.
A long time.
For a long time. So, I encourage residents, if they haven't seen it, to check into the local channels, which I think are 8:32, depending on whether you have Comcast or Verizon.
In addition, that same presentation can be found on the DSC-TV website, and you can watch it on your computer, and, of course, is available at the school website, the school committee website. There's so many ways to do it.
There's so many ways. But the cable one has your lovely voice walking through the slide presentation. Okay. So, I'm checking in. The school committee has already voted for the middle school air conditioning project. We have the language here with the adjusted figure since the bid was opened in December. So, I am here to enter, asking to enter... Do we have to entertain a motion? We already voted. It's just, we're just confirming the amount, that this is correct, and we can forward the dollar amount to both towns. Correct?
That's correct.
All right. So, I'm just gonna read it. Yes?
I just wanna make sure this allows the region to follow. Everybody understands that.
The difference is that one was municipal, the intermunicipal agreement, and what we're looking at is the language that allows the region to do the budget.
So, the warrant article would read that the Dover Sherburne Regional School District hereby appropriates the amount of $853,000 for the purpose of paying costs of adding air conditioning to the middle school, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, called the project. To meet this appropriation, the district is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 71, Section 16D of the General Laws and the District Agreement as amended or pursuant to any other enabling authority. So, with the go-ahead from the committee tonight, we will direct the administration to forward the amount. They have the wording, but you'll confirm that it's for the district to borrow, and that the amount is $853,000. So, any further discussion needed? There's no vote? Yes?
So, there's no vote at this time? So, this is just a...
We have to vote.
We have to vote now, right here.
Okay. So, thank you. So, there will be a motion.
That's the motion.
This is the motion.
Yes.
Well, the motion is to...
I move that the Dover Sherburne Regional School District, et cetera, hereby appropriates $853,000 in all the different ways that you said.
Okay. A second?
Second.
Discussion?
So, I have, my challenge is the sequencing of this, in that we don't know where we are in our operating budget, and by voting for this, it seems like we're committing to do the work next fiscal year, and then committing the town somehow to be either advertising debt or paying free cash for it. But we don't know where we are in our operating budget, and we still have a substantial gap. So, I feel like by voting for this, this is prioritizing this expenditure over things that we don't even know about.
Other comments?
Well, I would only comment, yes, you're right. I hope by the end of the evening, we will have an idea of what our preferred operating budget is, but obviously, we won't have that pinned down for still for a while. But, I mean, obviously, you know that this isn't an operating budget item. It's, you know, it's an entirely separately funded item, and so, it's not... There's nothing procedurally wrong with doing that.
No, but it's a decision.
Yes.
You're committing for X and not knowing what Y may end up being pulled out of the operating budget to meet Sherburne's constraints of what they have available to fund government, both capital and operating next year.
So, to answer... Oh, go ahead, Dana.
Well, go ahead and answer the question.
I was gonna say, to answer your concern about sequence, I know that when we certify the budget next week, March 11th, that's our high watermark, and anything can be brought down, including this. So, you can always withdraw your warrant article. So, the sequence is off. However, it's not off, so that at 7:00, when the two finance committees come, we can say, we have these two warrant articles, these are the amounts, this is where our operating budget is, we're looking to certify next week, let's get in conversation. So, it seems out of sequence to you, I get that, and to me, it still leads up to town meeting.
Yeah. You know, this is a really interesting thing, though. While you were gonna... Go ahead, first.
I was just asking...
So, this is a little, you know, what Michael's saying, or my interpretation of what Michael's saying, is sort of an interesting question or situation. So, and I hear what you're saying, we can always choose to modify the warrant articles. It doesn't seem like, it doesn't seem very likely, 'cause to me, my experience has been, it doesn't mean it has to be this way, but my experience has been that sort of once you deal with capital stuff that's gonna be put onto the warrant, it's kinda, it's sort of a done deal, and you just, that doesn't have anything really to do with the operating budget in and of itself, except what Michael's saying, that, you know, this money is coming from a pool that's finite, and, you know, we were sort of carving it up in advance, saying we're gonna commit to this capital, and the operating is then gonna sort of be variable, potentially, to this capital. And so, I understand what you're saying, that you could vote the capital, and you could then go back and sort of say, well, we don't think it's working, because in that finite pool, so we really think we should modify the capital. But I think the towns treat it very separately, as separate items, and we sort of always treated it separately, and I sort of think that if we were to approve, once capital's kind of approved, I don't know that we would necessarily keep it on the table unless somebody kept it alive on the table.
Well, yes, you're absolutely true. They've always been treated separately. So, this is not wrong, but it's more novel to keep them married, which is, I understand your perspective, so...
Because we don't...
So, we've always dealt them so.
Yeah.
We've had our operating, we've had our capital. In terms of conversations with Sherburne Capital, we spoke with Sherburne Capital this year that hasn't happened. So, it has been a little bit novel.
Yeah.
I hear what you say about not, a bit not coming out. I've also never had a budget year like this, where we're this late in the game, and we don't even have a strong sense of what our capital requests are, so it's quite atypical. I agree.
To the extent that they are seen separately, then isn't, doesn't it then come down to the voters? Because if, if in the end, the voters see that there's enough capital for both, enough money for both, then they approve both. If they believe that there's not enough money for one, but there is for the other, they say so. And even if the towns differ, that's okay, 'cause that's what the voters have said, and then that's our decision about whether that capital project moves forward for this year or not.
If I might, one of the things we're trying to do with this, because both towns have been calling on almost a daily basis to be able to determine what we may want, they're holding a number of warrant articles for us. So, in looking at this, what we're looking at, that this would be something that we would add to our debt service. It is, although it is a part, and we refer to it as the operating budget, it is a separate, and the operating budget is looked at from a different lens. I think that's probably the best that we can do. Our concern, and the concern that I'm hearing as I'm talking to different people, is the status of the municipal, the intermunicipal agreement seems to be up in the air. Our attorney is talking to the head of the DOR's legal area, who he has worked consistently with. There seems to be a different perspective on this as far as Sherburne, one of the under attorneys that was contacted. So, I'm concerned that we really have to give some direction to the town regarding what we're going to do, and rather than losing the whole thing, this is something we have done successfully. It at least keeps it moving forward, so that the townspeople do have that opportunity to vote on it.
Do we know, as this is structured right now, this proposal, is it intended to be excluded debt, at least in Sherburne, for their decision-making purposes? Or who in Sherburne makes that decision to say, this is gonna be proposed only in an excluded debt fashion?
They've already given us direction. I don't believe they can do anything other than debt exclusion at this point. At least, that's what I've been told from...
That's right. We're treating it as a debt exclusion, and we're a week from Thursday. We are definitely closing the warrant, so we need your language. So, I encourage you to come to terms with this if you can.
So, is it fair to describe that this will only fly if it gets approved as a debt exclusion in Sherburne?
I don't know how else to do it.
Okay. Okay. Then, then it does not become competing for the finite amount of funds that advisory has to work with...
That's right.
...in a pre-override structure. And that's why I didn't wanna get in a situation that we were, this was displacing other pre-override expenditures.
Any more comments before we vote? All right. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The flip side has the wording for our second placeholder. It says that the Dover Sherburne Regional School District hereby appropriates the amount of blank for the purpose of paying costs of the following capital item, equipment items, and improvements. So, this one, obviously, we do need to talk further. We had a presentation by Michael and Dana, January, which needs so much more of our time and attention. But the very shortened nut and bolts that they came up with, that were deemed important to attend to in FY14, amounts 122,000 and even. So, I don't know if people have that handy, so...
I made it out at the last meeting, and I didn't think...
So, well, I made some copies of just that one page. I made 15 or 16, so it should be enough. So, while they're being cast out, so I think there's enough for Denise Scott and Jean as well. We're looking at maintenance and replacement. $47,000 replacing failing VCT flooring at the middle school, $22,000 masonry repointing for linquists, $16,000 lighting and walkways for high school parking, $14,000 flooring updates in high school, $7,500 irrigation valve maintenance allowance, $6,000 replace snow blower equipment, $5,500 exhaust fan maintenance replacement for kitchen, and $4,500 replace overhead high school service doors with energy-efficient ones. Michael and Dana, did you want to discuss your level of commitment to these items happening? Not in terms of your vote, but in terms of, I mean, I have seen some things come back from prior years that we hadn't gotten to, so I don't know if things are really getting pushed now, like the snow blower, but this was what was absolutely minimum. You had over 100,000 of things you had to research further.
Right. These were the, these were the items that Ralph Kelly had deemed to be priority one for this year, after looking at all of the hundreds of potential items. These were the ones that he had felt were either items that have been deferred and really shouldn't be deferred longer, or things like the snow blower, that would be something that would help defray variable costs over time. So, that was our, basically what, he was, his best professional opinion of what should be invested in for this year, knowing that there are other things that are gonna be coming year after year, and we can only push things out so far.
But, you know, I'd say the one item is things like lighting and walkways from the high school parking lot, but one of the reasons of putting in the walkways is then a lot less junk gets tracked in during the winter, and that'll preserve the life of the flooring materials in the high school. So, there's, you know, not everything's crystal clear cut, but it all seemed to be reasonable, and he had to place a certain amount of trust in his judgment.
And I believe the flooring were safety issues, the VCT floors.
This is the final portion of the middle school project that's been done over the last few years.
Right. Right. All right. So, what is the pleasure of the committee in terms of addressing this? Yes?
I would strongly urge that we put it on the town meeting floors, this amount. I think that to do otherwise, I'm repeating myself, I'm sure, but to do otherwise, I think is not to give townspeople the opportunity to maintain the buildings that they paid so much for, and I think is a dereliction of our duty to bring to the attention of townspeople that it's time to start doing it.
Any other comments?
I think it was well articulated.
Do we have a plan for advocating for this, or presenting this, or, you know, anything of that sort?
Well, at the open hearing of the warrants, this would be included, the FY14 budget would be included in both warrant articles.
And prior to that, I can follow up with Lee Sherburne Capital Committee and see if they have any additional questions or concerns.
That would be helpful, really helpful.
Yeah. When I walked them through our, you know, our presentation from January, you know, they were all two days into this new assignment, so...
Right.
But at that point, they didn't have any concerns, or objections that were obvious. Again, it may have been premature for them to jump in.
I appreciate what's being said, and I very much value the importance of our buildings. I wanted to brought forward the request to fund the study, and I really just need to share with you, I have a concern in bringing it forward, because we're also bringing forward a large air conditioning project, which is also very important to us. And I don't know, and don't understand, the capital position as well for the town of Sherburne, as I do the operating position. So, I would just ask that consideration be given. Are we putting too much on the plate? I understand what was said, and, Richard, I 100% agree with you, but I'm wondering if a delay of one year might also help the town in being able to move forward a full agenda for the rest of the project. I just would ask for consideration.
And my only other concern is if this is, I don't know if all of this is actually bondable under the statutes, or what constitutes the bond issuance, or bands, or whatever. So, that would have to be clarified with the towns and Mr. Manley.
Would I get Sherburne's treasurer's opinion to that? Is that, that's the right place to shop this? Okay.
Okay. So, we need to have these warrant article, this warrant article language in, the towns would like to have it by like next week, right? Both towns?
Mm-hmm.
So, is it possible that we could vote in favor of this with, just so that they have the language, and they're aware that it's sort of in the pipeline, and we nail down the details on it? Because it's either that, or you just lose your opportunity to, I mean, you can always withdraw the article. And I, and again, my experience has been, at least in Sherburne, that this will go in front of the open hearing, and, you know, we may learn, and maybe we can learn that tonight, but we may learn that the, that advisory is sort of recommending one, both, neither, you know, the answer may be given kind of to us. But I personally would propose that we put it forward at least till we can get the details nailed down, hopefully in short order, and then we can withdraw it.
So, the only shift I would make is we have 35,000 in our operating that we were keeping as a placeholder for capital items. We could either bring this amount down by 35,000, or keep this at 122,000 and reduce our operating by 35,000.
But I thought that 35 was more for, you know, the lightning hits the, hits signs outside, and we have to replace them, or just unexpected maintenance. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but...
No, you, this, about 75,000, of which 35 has actually been a placeholder for capital, like items such as the flooring, or...
Some of those, right. Okay. So, it's not, it's not a contingency kind of thing for emergencies?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Wouldn't, shouldn't we figure out what is not bondable?
Yes.
Because it seems like those items up to 35,000 could then be brought back in onto the operating.
Yeah. So, yeah, so we, that makes most sense, is let's prove for 122,000. If we determine in the next couple of days that some cannot be bonded, we will try and do so in the operating. If it can all be bonded, we can reduce our operating. All right. So, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the warrant article on capital equipment items as presented. How do I refer this, to this?
Yeah.
As presented. As presented. I'll put a paperclip on it.
Are you mad about 122,000? Oh, sorry.
In the amount of $122,000, and to be forwarded to the towns immediately to determine if these items can be bonded. Do I have a second?
Second.
So, we're gonna have the towns tell us if it can be bonded, or we're doing that?
We all have to, because we all have to do a bond analysis.
So, I have one question, just process-wise. With the air conditioning, we have a firm bid in hand.
Yeah.
With many of these projects, we don't have a firm bid, some of them which would need to go out to bid, I assume. How do, how does that work if bids don't actually come back at the values that we've estimated?
So, in fact, there's language in the, in the motion.
Okay.
That says, if it's greater than necessary, you roll it over, if it's less, then, of course, it's fishbait. Yeah.
In total, it just can't be over.
Okay.
So, that just, so our expectation as a committee is that kind of by maybe our certification, we would know the details about bonding, and bidding, and everything we need to know to be able to have confidence getting this...
All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries as well. All right. Thank you. So, Brianna, do you wanna give us a update?
Yes.
Because we failed to add you to our agenda, and I would like to put your write-in there.
That's okay. I'll just give you a quick update on what we've been doing. Today, we had the American Red Cross Blood Drive. It lasted all day, and we actually had a really good turnout. There were about 50 or so people that were able to donate after signing up, and so it was really successful. We were happy about that. And we will be meeting with Ms. Launigan soon to discuss the things that we feel are most important that we gathered from our town meetings, which have all concluded. And we have two events that are coming up that we're planning for. The March Madness event that we usually do, which is a big pep rally for us, is now moved to April, so now it's being called April Antics.
Lanny, you can all take these seats, 'cause we're gonna make it more of a joint meeting.
And we are planning that right now, and we are also planning our Teacher Appreciation Day. So, those are all coming up in the future, and next time, I'm sure I'll be able to give you another update. We just started them, so we haven't gotten too far into the process yet, but we're hoping to get pretty far in our next meetings in the future. So, I'll be able to bring you those updates next time.
So, you don't have any pints?
Not this time.
Do you keep tabs from year to year to see?
Um, yes, actually. At the beginning of the signups this year, we were way far behind in where we are in normal years, so we really had to get a push for blood. And the American Red Cross also said that they were very low on blood donations, because they had to cancel many sections like this.
Oh, because of storms.
So, they were in a desperate need of blood, and we did get our numbers back up to, last year, we had 75 people signed up, which was way too many, if there was an overflow in the, in the gymnasium. So, this year, there were 60 people who signed up, that's where we capped it, and there were about 50 people who were elected.
That's great. That's great. Thank you. So, we're just finishing up a few items before everybody else comes in from the finance committees. Item number six is the academic excellence. So, we have the high school, uh, did you wanna do your superintendent's report too as well? You said you could be short. No? No. The high school report from Ms. Launigan. We have three donations that need approval. The first one is a donation for the Dover Cultural Council in the amount of $400. It's a grant for the robotics club. And the second one is a donation from Sherburne Arts Council in the amount of $200 as a grant for the robotics club. So, first, I figured we'd get that off the page, and then off the table, and then we'll ask us any questions about the high school report. So, may I have a motion to approve those two grants as donated? And a second? Okay. Any questions? That was fun news.
Thank you.
That was fun news. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the last, we have a donation from the Dover Sherburne Gridiron Club to Metco in the amount of $320, and that was for some taxi service, which I thought was great. Do I have a motion to accept the donation?
Aye.
And a second?
Sorry.
Dana? Any questions?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you again. That was great. So, you have the high school report. Are there any questions for Ms. Launigan? Or Denise, did you wanna? We didn't think you were gonna be here, so this is a pleasure. Did you have any questions for Ms. Launigan? Because we're trying to keep it down to a short, I'm trying to see if I had questions for you or Mr. Callett.
I would just say, congratulations to all the wonderful things that are here. Athletes, the artists, the singers, the National Scholars, finalists.
Yep. The finalists were in the paper.
Outstanding. Our free musical is upcoming, so I just wanted to...
Which is West Side Story, and the dates are...
Weekend.
15 and 16.
Thank you. And the middle school report, Mr. Callett, we don't have anything to approve. Did we have any comments for Mr. Callett? I think it was... So, I had a couple of questions.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Dana. What's that?
Has there been an announcement?
This is really bad, that we haven't had a chance to talk to each other.
They didn't know, they didn't know that they were presenting.
I approved. Your choice.
Yes, we have an assistant headman.
Oh, you have an assistant?
It was decided earlier today.
That's true.
It is Brian Maringer, who's come to us from Norwood, Copey Middle School, and we're very excited to have him join us. I'm not sure when that will be, if it's July 1 or early.
We're in negotiations.
We're in the process of trying to figure that out.
He will be calling to talk with you. Sorry for making this so complicated.
He may call my cell number.
He knew you were off campus for that workshop, but tomorrow, he'll be getting hold you, and he's talking with his folks, and then Friday, he and I will be back together.
Well, as someone who actually met Mr. Maringer, I hardly congratulate you. I think that, I'm sure you guys will make a great team, and I think it'll be great for the... the school, so congratulations.
Thank you. We're very excited.
As is he. I can't wait until he comes before this school committee and you have a chance to meet this, this gentleman, because he is a bundle of energy, very positive, very bright, and I think he's a really good, plus he likes soccer. He didn't know about the University of Florida, though. No, he wants to go to a game, so be careful there. But I think that his priorities are so focused on children, um, you just can't escape it and, um, his philosophy on some of the things that he has encountered that were challenging and difficult and could have been perceived as a negative or a setback, he jumped in with both feet and perceived that as learning opportunities and here's what I learned and here's how we handled it and it, I, I really am excited about Scott bringing this gentleman to you so you can meet him.
Congratulations. And Lauren, you thought the process was-
Of course. Yes, I was, it was impressive.
So we have these chairs for the finance members. We're just, just finishing up our, um, other items. If you can just allow us a couple minutes.
We were extremely fortunate because Scott and the administrative committee sent me to outstanding, I mean, after the outstanding candidate. And, um, it was really an honor to have such people, such qualities, so we just didn't doubt that she would have to, so.
He accept the job?
Okay.
Lauren, there's still seats up front.
You guys did a really good job with that, sir.
Lauren, on the spot, type of guy I like.
That's great.
Yeah, and I, I think a really wonderful position of staff. I think that you and he are gonna be- That's capital.
So Douglas, you can come up, there's a seat there, there's one here, Jean. Okay, and, yeah, you can hand those out. And the other question I had, that was one thing I circled, so congratulations. The media center, when someone creates a book club, is that different than a club at the high school that usually involves- So there's no compensation, it's not a stipended position? That's great, that's great. All right, team, we're almost done.
Yeah.
Anything else for Mr. Callett? I do appreciate you doing your reports.
Thank you.
I just want to add that certainly, we were very impressed, but they were also very impressed with the eleven students who participated in the process. They just, they were in awe.
There were eleven students in the process?
There were three that took on tours of the facilities and there were eight that they met with.
That's fabulous. For those of you who are arriving, uh, late, we have a new assistant headmaster, uh, position that was offered today and accepted. They're in contract negotiations now, so that's great news.
And when does that announcement go out to, uh, families?
It literally happened in my office this afternoon, so you are getting that hot off the cuff.
Okay.
Can we get something out tomorrow? And he cited a couple of stories from a couple of the students at this level.
We did, we did, that's why I said.
All right, the last thing before we welcome all the finance committee members is we just need to approve minute, meeting minutes of February fifth, two thousand and thirteen. We have them in front of us. Can I get a, a motion to approve them? So move, and a second? And a second?
I haven't had a chance to read it yet.
Second.
Has everybody read them? All right, let's table, let's, we'll read on those. Not approved, okay. So, uh, that is it for our half hour before the finance committee, committees of Dover and Sherburne joined us, so thank you. We, so now we're shifting to beers and we're all in session. Uh, we tried to, um, deal with taping at the same time as letting everybody fill at the table at the same time, so this is our hodgepodge answer to it. So I wanted to, um, thank you for coming. I know it's been a very late budget year where we are, um, we haven't yet presented before your committees. So Ms. Briggs has passed around, um, from her original, uh, draft budget that I believe you all got copies of in December. Did they get it in hard binders?
Not binders, but they, they got it.
In packets?
Some got lighters and some didn't.
Uh, so-
Thank you, Beth.
So Valerie passed out her original letter, sort of letter of intent, because it, it gave some narrative and that'll go along with the, um, spreadsheet that you have. But the FY fourteen budget was first presented to the regional school committee in December and it was a, um, four point seven five percent increase from FY thirteen and, and this, uh, you've all received ahead of time. It was a nineteen million, seven hundred and close to seventy thousand operating and with debt, um, it was up to twenty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy, thereabouts. The debt did include, uh, a middle school air conditioning project, which is a, um, special warrant article that we're gonna have at the town meetings this time, so that was obviously a significant, um, new item. Uh, but some of the other items were just, uh, salary was three point seventeen percent of the increase, um, and, uh, benefits were, were in there. They didn't include any additional capital items, uh, which we'll get into tonight. They didn't include any, um, increase in, um, teachers, you know, FTEs, uh, even though there had been some requests. Uh, it also did not include point-six FTE, which is a full-time equivalent of a guidance counselor position, that wasn't included. And, um, in our favor, there were, the utilities didn't have any increase. The health insurance, we initially had budgeted in that first draft eight percent and thankfully the rate came in at four percent, so there was a savings there. Uh, the Norfolk retirement, we garnered an additional twenty thousand that wasn't in that first draft, uh, budget. And there was level spending on many, many, many line items and I really do want to acknowledge that because I've never seen a budget presented with so many zeros next to line items that the administration really took seriously the difficulty in trying to carve out a budget that will be successful at town meetings this year, so, um, they listened to that. Not in our favor, um, uh, the guidance from the two towns was very different, so it was a, a one percent, um, budget increase, guidance from Sherburne and Dover was, uh, level services and present any initiatives or changes separately to, to be, um, discussed. So that, that, uh, always happens, but it was seemed particularly difficult this year. Then the other thing that worked in our favor subsequent to that first broad, uh, draft budget is that the Governor One budget came out with the cherry sheet numbers and there was this whopping five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, uh, in additional money that was, um, it felt good for a few weeks, until the sequestration came into play and although the, the, the state, uh, doesn't have any changes to the, the budget, so that cherry sheet still stands, I think we've all been reading the newspaper and watching TV and, um, to count on that additional money would be, um, maybe a little bit too optimistic right now. So the current draft that you have, so Valerie's message, um, has these tapes behind, uh, stapled behind it, correct? Valerie?
No, I think it was a separate handout.
It's a separate handout? It has, um, to date, as far as the, um, regional school committee has gone, I'm trying to find it myself. Thank you. Um, so since that first draft budget in December, you'll see that we have, uh, some budget reduction semi, I, I alluded to the Norfolk County. So we were able to bring it down, um, a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Then the healthcare came in, that's the additional eighty-six thousand. And then just last week, we made some additional budget reductions, uh, in an effort to, uh, bring it down. So as it currently stands, uh, the budget for FY fourteen is, this is, uh, operating nineteen million, seven hundred and sixty-three thousand and sixty-six dollars, which is a three percent budget increase, um, from FY thirteen. If you turn this over, and I'm gonna ask Chris, after I finish, I'm gonna ask Chris to, you'll see there's two columns, the school committee and the administration, two twenty-six on that first page. I will ask Christine Teig to speak to that. On the flip side, you'll see, um, with respect to, woo, solid print, um, with respect to Dover and Sherburne, um, assessments, the final assessment on the far right is, um, at fifty-three point nine-nine percent of the population being from Dover is ten million, one hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and eleven, and Sherburne at forty-six point oh-one percent of the student population, this is for operating, is eight million, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven. And then where it says budget overview, you'll see that the member assessments are still the majority of, of, um, the revenue source or how, how we pay for our schools. The excess and deficiency fund, um, as you all know, is, is our free cash. We are contributing, uh, five hundred thousand from that account to offset the, um, budget. The revenues came in at one point six eight three nine fourteen and this does not include the additional money from the cherry sheet, so we're, we're taking that off the table right now, so we don't confuse things, um, because we've had different versions of the, of the budget. So that does not include, uh, the cherry sheet number. And then we have the revolving accounts. So if you go down further, um, the operating for Dover comes in at two point nine-two percent. I, I won't go over the figures because you have them right in front of you. Sherburne, it comes in at four point oh-six percent and that is because, um, Sherburne's population has gone up more, uh, this past year than Dover has and so it's impacted through assessments. This debt, this debt does include the, um, middle school air conditioning project, which is eight hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars and it is a separate warrant article. Um, and the school committee met before you came tonight and we, uh, did approve to pass the, the, the eight hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars in the language to the town. The towns already have the language, but they didn't have a, a fixed number. So we are, um, moving forward with the air conditioning project, respecting that this is a night to converse. So it is, it is, uh, reflected in our debt. So way down at the bottom, we have a total of twenty-one million, three hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-two, which is a three point five-one percent increase, uh, including operating and debt. Chris Teig added, um, enrollment figures on the right-hand side, which, uh, they were included on the sheet in earlier drafts and that was, um, in response to a request for that. So you can see the, the last five years, Dover, Sherburne and how it has, uh, impacted operating assessments. And I am going to, um, let Christine Teig fill us in on how the numbers changed, um, let me just stop one second. The school committee also looked at its second warrant article this evening, which is capital items, and the amount was a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, so that would be a separate warrant article, we also have the placeholder. The school committee has, has approved to go forward that warrant article, uh, understanding that some of the items on there may not be, uh, considered, uh, how was your language pronounced?
Bondable.
Bondable, I didn't know if that was a- So, um, so it is a hundred and twenty-two thousand, we're gonna immediately go to the towns and find out, is it all bondable? And if that's the case, great, if not, um, how is that going to, um, reflect operating? Our current operating budget has, uh, thirty-five thousand dollars in it for capital items, so it's not in addition to the hundred and twenty-two. We could, so I was saying earlier, we could either, um, if, if those hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars worth of items can all be bonded, we could reduce our operating budget by thirty-five thousand dollars. Or if they're not all, we have some space in the operating budget that we've already allocated for capital items. So I just wanted to get that clear. Okay, and what I would like Chris to go over is, uh, more for school committee. Uh, on the front page, there were some budget reductions that we did and the administration is coming back with a recommendation, uh, the net is the same, it's still reductions of forty-five thousand, five hundred, but, um, they can explain why the, the Wi-Fi and projectors, uh, they don't recommend that we, we pull those out of the budget. And then, Chris, I would like you to walk through, um, the excess and deficiency, which is an additional sheet that you have tonight, because the school committee has been considering whether or not it can allocate additional funds, funds from E and D to, um, help offset the budget gap that we have in meeting, uh, guidance from both towns. Um, and, um, we thought some historical background might be helpful, uh, to get a clearer picture of it. And so we wanted to speak with you tonight because we've got to figure out what, what that additional amount might be. And then the very last page is the cherry sheet, um, figures, what was budgeted and what was actual for the last, um, three fiscal years, eleven, twelve, thirteen. So Chris, do you mind filling in?
Sure.
Valerie, you'll want to speak?
Administrators and school committee, um, I, I do think that it is important, um, for you to know that we do have some answers for you, but I do appreciate, um, Denise and Scott and Jean all having been, um, tied up in, um, training this afternoon for this evaluation process that we're trying to do, being here, um, to address any of your, your needs and concerns. I also want to thank school committees for allowing us to pause on the action and the movement that we were making last week so that I could take this back to the administration. They very much appreciate you being consulted on that, so.
Sure. After the school committee meeting, as Valerie had stated, we really needed to talk further with the administrators as to the implications. As far as the Wi-Fi, um, eighteen thousand dollar amount, that amount was identified as for, specifically for bring your own device. Upon further discussion with, um, Jean, uh, the Director of Technology, we learned that it's not just for bring your own devices, for every wireless, um, item we have in this building, such as laptops, things such as that. Bring your own device has had a drain on our existing system, but we've had interruptions in service even before that. And this is, and Jean, help me out here.
Yeah, um, I'm happy to, uh, talk a little bit further. The eighteen thousand dollars really does constitute moving towards, um, a deployment strategy of one at this point, thirty-two classrooms to help support not only the BYOD, but our existing infrastructure of wireless laptop carts and our continued move towards, um, the use of iPads in the classroom and for teacher use. We are about two-thirds of the way to that point right now. And so this eighteen thousand really helps to supplement the remainder of that, um, goal. If, if this was to be taken off the table, where we've already experienced this year, um, a tremendous amount of, uh, disrupts, disruptions in Wi-Fi service. BYOD does bring its own issues because, um, you're not just talking about a student bringing in a laptop, their cell phones are picking up on the Wi-Fi, so some kids may have more than one device. And it's really, um, the, the, the number of devices in a particular area, it's not necess, that, that constitutes needing more device, more access points, um, to substantiate and, and be able to afford wireless for not only BYOD, but also for just instructional purposes with the current, uh, wireless hardware inventory that we currently have. And, and obviously the growth that we are, that we may experience in the future.
Concerning the projectors, again, we had further discussion. The projectors are actually reside in the, um, AB budget, excuse me, but it's become more, um, it really should be within the jurisdiction of the, um, technology as it has implications on smart board boards and everything.
Yeah, um, the, all of the projectors that have been, uh, installed in our buildings have really either been installed from the point of the building construction in two thousand and three and two thousand and four, or they were gradually installed in maybe five to ten classroom increments, um, over the course of five years, uh, afforded by grants from Dover Sherburne Education Fund. We are now looking at the need to begin a replacement cycle, uh, some of these projectors are, are aging to ten years. And last year, we had a second grant written for the high school science department, two DSEF, to replace their projectors in their classrooms, which had been installed as the original ones, um- original ones from the building. So this is always, as Chris indicated, this was almost a sub-department of the library being audiovisual. But audiovisual really, it's separated. It's not necessarily audiovisual anymore. It's a component that's part of the classroom delivery of instruction, and it combines with all of the technologies within the classroom. And our teachers are very, very dependent upon their LCD projectors working because that's how they display most, a lot of their electronic documentation and delivery of instruction to our students. So this was a very conservative approach to replace six of the projectors in each of our buildings based on age of those projectors. And six projectors comes to approximately $15,000. In looking at the current inventory of our projectors, I'm starting to see a much larger need in this area. So if this needs to be removed from the budget this year, it will be a much larger figure next year.
You might wonder, the philosophy that we have had has been to be conservative, but also proactive, so that a teacher does not go into their classroom and their equipment is so old that it breaks down, and then they are without until we can order and get it replaced. And that is one of the parts of the conversation we had this morning. You know, is it time for that philosophy to change? Is this conservative enough that it meets the need and that we're able to continue to be proactive, but perhaps not on the scale that we once were? And that was the result of our conversation, was this still allows us to be proactive, to identify those that have been in since 2003 and that need to have a replacement before it breaks down, but that instruction will continue and that it won't be disrupted with malfunction of equipment. So...
So Valerie and Chris explained that what they did, and let's see, and the physical education supplies...
Yeah, we have no issue with... I mean, obviously, we have issue, but we feel that that is probably one of the areas that we could agree to as far as reducing that amount. The technology, though, what we have done, originally, the school committee adjusted the number by 32,000. After conversation with Gene, we are saying we will make a reduction within the total technology budget of $10,000. Football uniforms, they haven't been replaced in some time. However, given the current situation, we would concur with the school committee. One of the things we did do was take a look at all vacancies that exist because of the change in administration, and literally went through individual administrators and identified what we believe the salary adjustment would be. And we came up with an additional 23,000, of which we actually had already identified 15. So in total, we are looking at $38,000 in salary adjustments for the new administrators that are coming on to the regional school district.
So unless the school committee has any questions to that, we'll move on. So to the E and D?
One of the questions that was asked is how do we know, because there was a proposal on the table to potentially increase the E and D? That we would take from the E and D from potentially 500 to 750,000. So I thought it was important to analyze over the last few years what's actually transpired. There's an intended use of E and D, which is basically fund balance or free cash, as the towns understand it. That's actually part of the budget process we go through, and that's identified in the first line item. As we go through the fiscal year, there are certain, obviously, not every dollar is expended budget to actual, and that creates an operating surplus. And a lot of that is unknowns because of maternity leaves that are told was after the budget. So what I've done, what we've done is separate out the operating surplus by salary variance and by operating variance. And I would like to point out, it's been generally running around $500,000. If you look at FY12, I would like to point out, though, of that 604,000, there actually was an additional 122,000 that was specifically attributable to contract negotiations, but wasn't used as a result of consensus on the contract for the teachers. So that, I think, causes a little aberration there, but generally, we've been running an operating surplus between 4 and 500,000. We've done our best guess estimate at this stage of the game of where we're coming in for FY13, and again, this is a preliminary, preliminary, preliminary estimate. I can say, at this point of, at this stage of the game, we're pretty confident in the salary variance because of the leads that are out there right now. The operating variance is the big unknown. One of the areas we used to receive significant amounts of turnback from were healthcare. My projection currently, we're coming within $20,000 a budget. In FY12, there was an $84,000 turnback. So there's a lot more individuals that are coming into the system because of qualifying events than what we've seen in the past. Another area is utilities. We had a real soft winter last year. That turned back about $70,000 to the E and D. We haven't even received a bill for February, which I believe was the first month. And we're running pretty close to where we were two years ago as far as utilities. It's too early to tell in that area. So right now, for all intents and purposes, we're projecting a surplus of about $40,000 in various line items and operating expenses. We currently are projecting a $73,000 surplus, and I assume there's no additional cuts from the state because of the federal issues that are going on, of 73,000. And that's been generated because of the litigation settlement. $50,000 of that is from the litigation settlement that wasn't budgeted as a revenue. The school committee approved that. And another 23,000 in Medicare Part D revenue, which comes back to us from West Bourbon. So, and again, that wasn't budgeted. So overall, if you look at what we anticipated for FY13 utilizing E and D, we're anticipating 500,000, but if the numbers come in, we'd only be utilizing 137,000 of that, as you can see in the bottom line. So because we've been generating, we're generating an operating surplus. And so if you play that out further to the FY13 projection of E and D, and then you take the 250, the additional 250, I mean, you are substantially lower to the tune of 2.46 versus the amount, historically, it's been between 3 and 4% as far as E and D concerning a percent of budget. And then I was asked to provide, what does 1% mean as far as E and D is concerned? 213,000 and a half a percent and a quarter percent.
So this was offered because the school committee was... If you go back to the very first page, which is tonight's budget, the gap is $576,069 between where the budget currently is presented to you this evening and ideally what the town of Sherborne would like us to bring forward. Do you want to sit through that one? Sure. So this is our current budget. The only other items that we have been entertaining is, do we take additional money from E and D? Do we attach some fees for athletic fees or parking, which we looked at, and I don't believe there's any flavor on the committee to do that. Is that correct? It was about 22,000, 25,000. That's where we ended last week. We, you know, so we're at the point where we could say, this is our budget, or we're still trying to pull some out of excess and deficiency. We could put a spending freeze in place on FY13 in hopes of kicking in a little bit more to E and D to bring up that percentage next year. But any other reductions would have to be ones that we, to date, haven't considered. We'd have to go back into the budget. So what we need at this point really is some kind of discussion response from both towns. If we have a budget here as presented, what that looks like for your budgets. So that would be the second sheet with the assessments details as they happen here.
Just a second clarifying question?
Yeah.
So this does not include the other .6 guidance?
It does not.
Position that we've been discussing? I'd love not to lose that, but maybe it's already lost.
It's not in.
It's not done.
Right. I don't want to lose it.
One more level.
Yeah.
Looking at this handout that Chris did, when I started at your very first handout back in December or whatever, there was an assessment subtotal for operating of 17,410,319. And when I get done doing these adjustments, I end up with a lower assessment number than what you have here of 17,235. So what could I be doing wrong?
That's what I think I brought to your attention yesterday.
Is that the issue with the minimum?
No. No, 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 no. Not even looking at how it gets spread. So assuming 17,410,000 on the very first sheet that I just checked from the website is the right starting point, we should be subtracting from that 207,045,500. And when you do that, you get 1 million, or 17,157,296, which would then be spread to the two towns. That's about a $78,000 difference.
I have to look at that, Michael, because that doesn't... Are you taking into consideration all the revenue sources?
I'm working off of the first version of this sheet that was in the December packet.
But nobody, I just gave you his email yesterday, right? You said you were...
That one, he's pointing out something different.
Are you pointing at something else?
Well, yeah.
And I don't know if it's because he doesn't understand how the model works or if...
I'm just working off of the assessment piece.
I understand.
What ends up getting split between the two towns. So I'm not focused on what the final percentage is that determines the split between Sherborne and Dover. But when you subtract the amount of cuts that are on this page, assuming, I think those all get applied against the operating assessment, there should be nothing else that catches those cuts. And when you do that, if you subtract these cuts from our very first number, you get something that's lower, 17,157,296. And it's a $78,000 difference.
All right.
So it potentially makes our job here $78,000 less bad.
I have to look at this in detail.
The 78,000, though, is a number that's ringing a bell. I don't know where it is, Michael, but let us go ahead and see.
So is this, is it possible that you could take 15 minutes to, like, out of the room?
I was going to say while we're talking.
I'm just asking. And then continue having conversation, and you can answer whether or not that's...
I was going to ask.
So do you need Michael for a second to just...
Yeah, I would love to clarify.
All right. So, thank you, and I did want this to be more participative instead of us just going on about our budget. So can you tell us how your budgets are looking for the towns right now? And we're still sitting with this delta. You know, some of us, I've never had a school committee, we haven't had formal votes, so I can only talk about individual conversations I had with people. I've never had a committee coming out of budget from so many different ways that it's interesting. The towns are quite, sometimes it's been contentious between the school committee and the towns. And this year, we're getting along great, and there's no stress here, but we're just coming from different places. So it's a very interesting budget. So we haven't gone into detail about what would be an additional E and D figure that we can come up with until we get some response to this current budget from the towns.
Well, I can speak on behalf of Dover. You know, in looking at the numbers, the latest numbers, I should say, because we've had a couple of different iterations. Looking at the percentage increase, both on operating and overall, I mean, we're comfortable with that number as it relates to Dover right now, given the additional cuts that have been looked at and that are articulated on the first page, Shelley. So we recognize that there's still more conversations to be had on this, but we're comfortable with that number, given our guidance earlier of level service.
Thank you. Thank you.
From Sherborne's point of view, I have to say that here, I'm confident at the moment with the number because for one thing, you know, it is not just the region, it is us. We have the Dover School of Dover, and in fact, the budgets that the Board of Selectment in town are responsible for, over, we're having a meeting on the 19th, where Sherborne School and the Board of Selectment will be coming to talk about their budgets and, you know, where can we find some money there, if we can find some money there. But at this time, we have, we don't know how much money we have, if we know of it all. We don't know how much money we're going to have to work with.
So how would the two towns like to problem solve with us being in different places, literally being in different places? You know, I haven't been hearing from the townspeople that...
Let me just address that, Shelley. I mean, I think it's not our job to vote your budget, it's your job to vote your budget. We've given you guidance, Sherborne has given you guidance. I think you need to vote a budget. If the numbers don't reconcile, then we're going to need to have further conversations. But I think you need to vote a budget. And we've given you guidance, I think, on that as best we can. Sherborne has given you guidance on that, but we can't make your budget for you. I think the school committee's got to make decisions as to how they want to close that. And that's, I think, where we're coming from at this point.
All right. So school committee, and Mr. Sherman, I'm assuming you're agreeing. So the school committee, we currently have this here. Did you work out, do we need to know any changes?
Yeah. There were changes from the December revenues because of the 9C cut.
So these numbers are good?
They're good.
All right. So school committee, this is the budget that we presented to the towns as of this evening. Is there any effort, and we're looking to certify next week, is there any effort that the committee would like to, individuals would like to bring forward to make any changes to the budget as it's presented?
Can I get a clarification on the state aid that is and isn't in this budget?
At the time that we brought this forward, because we really, it's amazing to me that I have not heard a word from the Department of Education at all. I'm very hesitant to include any of the cherry sheet until we're able to hear as to what the governor and the Department of Education are going to direct the superintendents to do. At this point, the number that you have here does not have any of the 500,000 that was originally brought forward for Chapter 70 on that cherry sheet. So I would hope that there would be some funding that would come in. I don't have any idea what percentage it will be. Part of the thinking was with the E and D, if we were able to look at that, it gave the towns a little more direction. I do anticipate that we will be getting something from the state that would be very helpful towards E and D.
No, that's fine. I know, that's fine.
Ellen? Okay, I have a question, and then I have a comment. On this three-year cherry sheet thing, the, for the FY13... On this three-year cherry sheet thing, the, for the FY13, it shows a $50,000 estimated receipts surplus. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so are we accounting, are we, is that in the budget anywhere as a revenue source, or?
This is FY13.
But it'd be added to E and D, is that?
Right, that's part of the one, you know how I identified?
Yes.
Access, well, it's not part of the 73.
So that's what my question is. Could it, is it potentially something that would be added into E and D at the end of the year? Because, you know, it looks on paper like this is.
Yep.
We are expecting receipts of $50,000 more. So that's another $50,000 that could be added to E and D, is that correct?
Yes, that's true.
Okay.
However, we really haven't received a revised cherry sheet that tells us what the 9C cuts were. They just gave us some kind of estimate for FY13. That's all I'm saying. That's why I didn't build it in my analysis.
Understood.
Okay.
And, you know, it's March, and maybe something will change, but.
I get it.
You know, it feels almost like it's a pretty, possibly good source of revenue that we could be adding back into our budget. That's, you know, you guys have to make that decision whether or not that is a reliable source. But at any rate, you know, potentially that's a $50,000 increase. So I'll just say, you know, I'll just throw it out there and sort of talk about this E and D thing, because we've been talking about it or thinking about it for some length of time. I have, you know, we obviously have the information that you provided. I guess what I'd like to sort of understand is, I know at some point we've had conversations about money that is available, not available, but we have held aside for CDC, the Child Development Center, for some obligations we have for the CDC. So I just would like to sort of bring that back up and know, is it the time right for us to potentially look at some of that money to, you know, in my mind, to sort of use as an offset if we were to use additional E and D for FY14, the 250,000? Is it possible that we potentially could, you know, free up some of that CDC money kind of to offset using E and D? And if that is something that we're in a position to be able to do, is there a certain amount of money that we, would sort of be the ideal amount of money to have, that we could get our hands on, wherever it might come from, that puts us above 3%, but doesn't push us too close, you know, projecting where, what might happen as the year goes on, too close to 5%? So like, if you, if you kind of could wish a certain amount of money to help us with this, to sort of offset using that 250, so that we end up in a favorable position at the end of the year with our E and D, but doesn't, you know, potentially put us too close to that 5%? Because there's that possibility. What would you suggest would be an amount of money that might ameliorate using the 250? If I'm making any sense there?
I think you are, Ellen, and I would, I would want school committee to look at the fact that that money has been there, as we have been drawing against it for good purposes. We've been very conservative with that. The only amount that I would be comfortable with would be that 250. But rather than doing that, I'd like that to reside where it is. But in the event that the state does not come forward with anything, then school committee would then be able to say, okay, this is, this is a time where we need to lay a little bit there to continue to honor our commitments. But that then could be used to offset that 250.
Right, so my.
But you don't want to do that if you're going to wind up getting money for the state.
I understand that. So if I understand correctly, we would actually have to sort of vote to move that money.
Right.
And, you know, so, and again, it seems to me perhaps we could just sort of know that that's there, and know that if we don't get any of this additional money on that cherry sheet, we could then move that money into place to use it so that it supplements the E and D.
Sure.
But not take that action until we get to the point where we get information from the state as to what the cherry sheet's going to do. You know, so for me, it gives me a level of comfort that we're not going to, although, you know, on paper right now, it puts our E and D at 2.46%. We know that we have a way to supplement that, that increases where our E and D ends up. And so it makes me okay with using that additional amount.
So are you making a motion to add another 250,000 from the excess and efficiency account?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
To offset the operating budget?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? We'll still discuss. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Lauren?
What is the downside of moving it from one account to the other? I mean, what is the?
This is funding that was accumulated through Community Ed, which was a standalone entity. When we researched closing the CDC, because they had gone into year after year loss as opposed to breaking even, at that time, we also found that some of the other programs that Community Ed had been in charge had been able to generate some funding. The problem was that when we closed CDC, we had retirement, and we also had workman's comp that had been filed against that funding. So that funding was left there to pay out. I think we're at about the tail end of the retirement, or the, I think the workman's comp has now been exhausted, but I think we still are paying our retirement out of that. When the school committee found that they were the authorizing agency for the Community Ed, which had been the standalone, because they had to be able to take the vote to authorize the closing of the CDC. And we did all of that research, and that's where we found that there were revenues that had been generated. So I don't think there.
In last year's presentation, it was listed as a $304,000 reserve against our E and D total balance. Has that, has there been runoff from that that's been paid out?
Just a little.
Okay, so the reserve is still approximately 300,000.
Right.
And, but we still don't have a good, solid figure of our final liabilities.
Right. We're going to be receiving the last requirement and assessment. Once we have that, we can move the money.
Is that like a $5,000 thing, or 50,000?
No, it's been running around anywhere between 40,000 and 60,000. And they go into a revaluation this year, so that could have an impact. That's why I would recommend the school committee wait until we know that number better. But I do agree with.
So 200,000 is a potential estimate of a floor for the excess reserves there? Is that fair to?
I would go more like 150.
So you think there's another 150,000 of bills that will eventually show up on our?
No, no, I think we could, we could count on at least 150 of that half at this stage of the game.
Yeah. But if it was 300,000, that would, it'd only get to 150 if another 150 of bills showed up.
Oh, same, same.
So there's no downside once that's all figured out?
Well, I would suggest that, I think this is an avenue that we should move forward with. I would suggest that you amend the motion to 150 if that's the guidance we're receiving now, unless you don't want to change, adjust your.
No, I thought they were talking about something else.
The motion was to use 250,000 of free.
Excuse me, I don't believe that was the recommendation, 150.
What I'm trying to say is, your concern is you're going down to 2.49% on E and D. We potentially have 150,000 of that, that will automatically replenish that number to get you around your 3.25%, which is a little bit better for everyone to swallow, I think. And the other 100,000 would be absorbed in effect if we did not receive any additional state aid. You'd end up with your E and D around 3.25% if we transferred it, put it in. At the end of the year, 150,000 from.
The child development center.
You're saying 150,000 and 250.
No, I'm saying both the 250.
Both the 250, but 150 should be coming from.
I'm comfortable with that.
So in effect, it would be 100,000 out of E and D, that would be.
Yeah. And Ellen's saying there may be 50,000 from last year's cherry sheet, so you're keeping 250. I think we all agree.
And I seconded that.
And seconded. So is there any more discussion about it? All right, all those in favor of moving an additional 250,000 from excess and deficiency to offset the operating budget for FY14? Okay, six and nothing. So we have just brought it down. Look at Lanny, I'm looking right at somebody, right at her.
Can I make sure I got the math, we're all together on the math?
That's your 250 from the other night.
Right. It comes and goes.
Comes and goes. But now it's got to vote. Now it's got to vote. All right. So from this first page, that 576 will be reduced 250,000, and that's coming from excess and deficiency, bringing us down to 226.
So your new assessment, is that what you're interested in?
Yeah, very much so.
209,464 for, that's the delta. Your total assessment would be 7,835,820, for a change of 209,464, or a 2.75% increase. Dover would be 9,181,449.
Is that too fast?
Can you, yeah, can you repeat those?
What would be the sample data?
I just, I gave you that. 7 million.
The net unaccounted for.
The difference.
That's how much you got.
464 dollars.
Right.
Dover is 146,223, for a total assessment of 9,181,449.
And that percentage for Dover?
Is 1.62%.
Okay. I hate to throw a wrench in this, but this does not include the second Warren article under the debt, correct?
Right.
Right.
Which is another couple of 20, maybe, not even, it's like 20, yeah.
All right, but should be noted.
You're right, you're right. That's a good point.
So on page two, under the debt, FY14, the debt is 1,553,226, but we are adding 122. That's the high watermark.
Yeah.
To that, because 35,000's already in the operating.
So that debt service could potentially go up another 24,000. If it was all borrowed.
But this is, I would say, but this, this is, I think this only muddies the water in that we're trying to work to Sherborne's operating guidance. The air conditioning project is going to live or die on its own as an excluded debt project in Sherborne, which is not going to impact their ability to achieve their 1% or whatever it needs to be. So I think it, just staying focused on the operating piece and pulling the debt off the table is going to, I think, help us get to where we need to faster.
All right, so we go up to those lines and just say operating?
Yeah.
Just do you?
Well, but there's, the debt service without the air conditioning for both towns goes down slightly this next year.
All right. So as a committee member with this additional 250,000, I feel done.
Can I not give up on the guidance yet?
So I'm just throwing that out there because, Michael, you're suggesting that we're still working towards a number, so I'm just telling you, I feel done.
But for them to understand what, where their gap is, if it's, if they're gapping to our number, or we're gapping to their number, let's make sure we're not muddying it by including an additional 70,000 or 80,000 of debt service, which doesn't impact their calculation as it was provided in guidance, because it's never going to hit their taxes within the 2.5% limit.
No, I got you. Lanny?
Okay, so we start at 209,464, we take off the 76,000 that we've committed, we're down to 133,464, and that's what Sherborne is short at this moment. I mean, we're having a meeting March 19th, unfortunately, our scheduling hasn't been great, and, you know, we'll be discussed at that meeting, and we'll see what happens.
All right. So I just did my position. Does the school committee want to, you're looking for an addition, are there any other reductions additions, and we can?
I don't mean to make one, a customer's last stand on this one, but I do, in, if the guidance, one of the guidance that we received was to provide level service, level service to me isn't just the service in the classroom, but it's the service of guidance. And with the increased population in high school, from everything I've heard in terms of caseload and the things that I've been listening to from constituents, it would be, I would prefer not to let the .6 additional guidance go without at least a discussion and a vote. And if it's the pleasure of my colleagues that I'm solo on that, that's okay.
So that's a motion?
I would like to make a motion.
And it's 31,000?
31,000.
31,000, do I have a second?
Maybe I don't know.
Second?
I'll second, just to get discussion going.
Okay. So Dana's made her piece. I concur, actually. I was not going to bring it up tonight, because.
I know, I'm sorry.
Because I'm exhausted by the budget. And I didn't, I didn't know that there was enough support on the committee, but I, my kids are now graduating college, but the guidance department was quite busy then, and the numbers are that much higher. I think my daughter's graduating class was 110, and we're looking upwards of 150, you know, these days.
180.
So I don't know how, I said, I am so worried that those overworked guidance counselors are going to do a cut and paste on people's recommendations, and they're not going to change Suzie's name to Joe. It's just my personal fear that a line is at stake with these students' college applications.
And it's only getting harder in the process.
And school committee, I would also share with you that the demands have changed. College entrance, even in the last five years, is not what it was. I am amazed as to the amount of work that is required and the timeframe in which the work is asked to be done. We have very high-achieving students. We have a population that almost all goes on to very respectable colleges and universities. And much to the guidance department's benefit, it's not just a matter of doing the endorsing of a student, but it's knowing that student, checking the records, making sure that they have looked at awards, making sure that they have done all of the work, and that those letters really do reflect who that student is, and that they've captured the important qualities of the student. That's only one, one capacity. And one of the things that I've heard from parents, that they are very concerned with, is that the idea of having a guidance counselor is that you have a counselor that you can go to, not necessarily with major troubles, but with troubles to be able to talk about. You can talk about a number of different issues that you may be having with scheduling, with classmates, with the teacher. That component is getting diminished more and more as the demands have increased. And you're right, Shelley. This guidance department works very, very hard. And I just wanted to offer that as a part of the conversation.
Did you want to say something, please?
I would also like to say, with the growing number of students who apply early, it makes for a very intense fall workload. And then, of course, we have the underclassmen who are requesting for assistance for their process earlier as well. It is a full load year-round. So they don't have a lot of downtime throughout the year. So just because, you know, the early admissions is over, and that the fall is very intense, as we try to make adjustments to students' schedules in the fall, if they have conflicts, we try to resolve them all, you know, before school ends. But we have a lot of students who do come in, you know, in the summer, and they have to get those schedules ready. And then they are faced with all of the, you know, the work with seniors, and then they get right into working, you know, trying to meet with freshmen, trying to work with juniors, not trying to. juniors, not trying to forget the sophomores. It's becoming a year-round packed schedule for our counselors, to the point where, no, I agree, if we're talking about level service, then having that additional part of a position can make a huge difference. And it's also great if you have a counselor, to have your counselor there on a whole-time basis.
Lauren?
Where I am is, I totally agree on the college and academic advising piece of it. I think that with more kids, you need more counselors. My concern is that if what I was being asked to vote for was a counselor who did academic counseling, I think I'd be much more okay with it. I have a, I think that we are a district that needs to separate out the college piece from the day in, day out. And I'm concerned about the structure of guidance, and I'm concerned about what I see as maybe, I worry about the priorities. I worry about the fact that virtually 100% of our kids go to college, and yet we don't siphon that off in its own way to be certain that enough attention is going to go to that. And I know that other systems do things a little bit differently. I know that private schools do things a little bit differently. It seems to me that there's a difference between sort of counseling support for an in-the-moment problem and a long-term college plan, let's call it, post-secondary planning kind of thing. And I would, I, because I've been really sort of confused by the way that our setup is structured, and because I've worried about how efficient it is for the post-secondary planning process, I sort of am a little uncomfortable about throwing more money at it. Especially when I know that so many parents are using independent college counselors because they're not getting what they think they need out of the school. And so if I heard that this was to go toward college counseling, I would be all over it. My fear is that it's a little bit of a bottomless pit.
Okay, so let's, since we're now deliberating how to run our schools instead of budget, let's just bring it to a vote. Yep?
Sorry, I just would like to say that I am going to abstain from conversation or voting on this, because my, I have a family member who is a long-term sub in the guidance department.
Yes, yes, thank you. So Ellen's not voting. Hold on, Michael?
So .6 FTE is how many dollars?
31,000.
31,000, so, and it has no benefit implications?
No, we put the position into a benefit eligible position.
So 31,000 plus benefits?
Right.
Okay, and then, the 23,000 of additional administrative salary reductions from transition, is any portion of that 23,000 touch upon the existing salary budget for the guidance administrator who is resigning, or not resigning, retiring?
We took a little bit...
Yeah, not a lot. I think we did.
You did. Is there a plan around what the right balance is of administrative versus people with caseload for that department?
Michael, part of what we're dealing with right now, and we are engaged in conversations among ourselves, quite frankly, we haven't really had the time to get into that restructuring work that we want. Our preliminary conversations have said that that particular department does need some administration. We're not quite sure the level that they need. Is there a possibility of sharing in some of the caseloads? I would say probably so, but I think that has to be contingent upon looking at what the administrative responsibilities will be, and making sure that the structure is also, I mean, I've met with Lauren, I've had conversation with her, and I saw one of our committee members shaking his head with the parents who have sought college counseling outside the school system. That doesn't please us. We don't really like hearing that our parents have to go outside. I think that our students are really well-known inside the school, and I think that that is a service that is a part of what is already in place. I think it's a department that we have continually heard, year after year, that we're not, we don't have the manpower to be able to provide the services that that department wants to provide.
So when would we hear that plan around how it will be...
As soon as you get the budgets cleared, then we'll start.
Well, no, but, okay, but...
I'm just being real honest with you.
Yeah, no, but like, April, May, June, September?
It is the beginning of March. You know, we want to get it advertised as quickly as possible.
But shouldn't you have a viewpoint about how you're going to organize it?
My partner over here has just acknowledged, he thinks we can do this by the April meeting. We don't have any...
Okay, and I guess the other thing that I would put out there for us, as we're making these very difficult choices about where our students need the most service and support, is we do have one person who is retiring, that's in the electives area, you know, how much of that 1.0 FTE needs to be fully replaced? And would we be better off shifting those dollars to college-oriented counseling to get kids over that last hump versus things that are in the...
I think that is a very viable point to raise. I think that in, and I will also let you all know that probably one of my strongest concerns at the high school are the number of DRs that students have. I'm not happy with that. I feel as though I'd like to maximize their instructional time. But right now, with the scheduling that we have, and some of the issues that we've been dealing with, that number has resided where it is. My greatest concern in talking with these is that if we start eliminating some of those choices, then those DR numbers continue to increase. And...
Does she want to add on that?
Yes, I would also like to add a statement too about the director's position in running the peer helping program that we have at high school, because that has been a very valuable program, and that does take up some of the guidance directors' time as well. And that program was run by someone who we used to have on staff, and that person left, and people have tried to just assume more roles and responsibilities, so I just want to make that clear. But also, yes, we do have a number of students who are in DRs, we are not happy about that. In looking at our scheduling, we may have to cut a section of marine science this year, this coming year, and so that will mean we'll have other seniors who will either have to take another course, if we have room in them, or that might add to the DR population. And so to cut from the arts at the same time would certainly mean that students might find it difficult to enroll in those courses so that they can complete their requirements. And that, and if they don't complete some of those requirements early on, it may impact them later on as juniors or seniors when they're trying to take a second language or another science. So I really would not want to go in that direction this time.
Really?
Better be good.
Better be, really.
Contrary, Lauren, I think this is a problem you could actually solve by throwing money at it. It's really true, I mean, all you do is just keep throwing money at it, you hire more and more and more people, and eventually you reach the right number of people. That's not necessarily the right way to solve the problem. I think, and perhaps again, contrary, Lauren, although correct me if I'm wrong, in fact, I would be, I would be less interested in throwing money at this problem if I thought it were going for more college advising. Frankly, this is a tail that is wagging a very overworked dog. And if the answer is restructuring the department, I'm all for it. If the answer is thinking of an entirely different model in which we stop seeing college shepherding as the thing that we do in order to get a handle on how we do the rest of the job, I'm all for that too. But I'm, I guess I'm not really for just throwing money at it without some consideration. This is a terrible time to make policy, as we all know, and we shouldn't be doing it right now. So I have now come down squirrely on both sides of the fence, but I did want to say...
I just think it's easier for them to structure and reorganize with full people and not parts of people.
I think that's very true. I would disagree with you on that. I mean, if you can find somebody to do X, and somebody to do Y, and somebody to do Z, you don't have to find one person that does all three of them. It may not be a great way to staff a school, and it may not be, it may be hard to convince people to do it, but I'm not sure the department will certainly, I don't know.
We have tried, that hasn't worked too terribly well. We've had a flood of parent communication, and we have tried that because their children have had experiences with one particular person, and then person B shows up, and they don't...
All right, no, enough, enough. We've heard from everybody, I'm going to bring this motion to a vote, all those in favor?
What's the motion?
The motion is to add $31,000, what about the benefits?
Yeah, what benefits?
You want to give me a figure?
15.
All right, see the difference? 31 and 15, so it would be adding $46,000 to... I think that just changed me, Chris. The motion, not to influence people. Ellen is abstaining, the motion is to add $46,000 to the operating budget to hire a .6 guidance counselor. Michael, you do like detail. All right, all those in favor? One against?
I'm going to abstain, because I just feel like...
Okay, so three against, one for, two abstentions. I'm sorry.
It was all right. Thank you.
It was good discussion.
Yeah, that's good. I, so, do we stand comfortable with our budget, that this is what we're going forward with next week when we certify the budget?
Yes.
So we can tell our townspeople that short of a vote? Yes? Short of a vote next week?
Oh.
It is a high watermark, I'm not saying that you won't hear that, you know, when we certify, it is the high watermark, you're still waiting for information on the cherry sheet, but...
And we have the research to do on the debt, to make sure the bonding, that's just an issue that we'll research with our attorney, and I think Michael, they're bonded to research with the town, and then we'll get together and bring that forward, and that number may be adjusted.
Can I just ask a question about the cherry sheet? This is my question, for 20, a single year's worth, but I did notice that of two of the last three years we've been down here, you've gone less than we asked for, and one year we get more. I'm just wondering, people who have been looking at this for, or not than we asked for, but the original number, estimate, right, from the cherry sheet, and what the actual receipts were, in two of those years, they were lower, and one year they were higher. And I just wonder, people who have had long-term experience, how does it...
The state usually provides us with the guidance on the cherry sheet as to what we should begin to build our budgets on. And then there is a variance depending upon what the budget is according to the state.
Right, I understand that.
I'm sorry.
No, my question was, I see that, you know, their original projection of, you know, like 1,393, and then we received is 1,381, and in FY11 it was 1,332, and what we received was 1,326, and then in FY12 it was 1,329, and we got 1,344. So I'm just wondering, you know, people who have been working at this...
The regional transportation plays a big factor in what happens with the cherry sheet. They give us an estimate at the beginning of the year, but we may not, we may actually see more money than the original estimate, or less money, depending on the number, the number that's voted by the legislature. And that's where I think the wiggle room...
No, but that's my question, you know, over 10 years, or over five, you know, we only have three here, so...
I don't think we know which possibly...
We don't know.
Right, no.
It's just totally random.
We can determine.
But it's, yes, it is random, it's a guessing game. Lanny?
Valerie had mentioned something about the sequester here, and federal grants, that we, you might know something, Dick.
We haven't. That's why, that's why I said a little earlier, we were a little disappointed that we haven't heard from the commissioner. Not a word out of, out of that office. Chris has been calling and checking on our repeat basis, and we just have not gotten the guidance at all. And I know that there are many superintendents that are calling, yes, I am, and the response has, we've just not got any direction.
So there is a possible negative that could happen?
I would anticipate that there will be a decline in some, like, I don't know that it would be in Chapter 70, the areas that the federal government, the handout that I gave to you all at last meeting indicated that the decline would be in special education, which causes me great concern, because we received some very sizable ramps to be able to meet some of the requirements of the special education children, and a decline in those particular areas could have impact upon us. So we're waiting to hear, and Lanny, once, once we do get some direction, I will get that out to school committee and share with our liaisons. And if you hear something before, you know, we've also been in check with the state legislators, and we just kind of, we just don't have answers.
All right, so thank you. If there's no further questions, we will make sure that we distribute the updated version once these additions have been, been made. And, and then when we certify the budget next week, we'll have the formal number for you, and then we'll just keep hoping we hear news from the state and federal level. Anything on your end that you want to add? Thank you for hanging in there with us, this has been a tough, tough one.
So what are key dates from here on out where our committee will be in dialogue with one or both of the finance committees?
So we certify our budget next week, which is the 11th?
13.
It's the 13th?
Wednesday, the 13th.
Wednesday, 11th.
And then we will notify the towns, and then you have, you'll have it, everything for the war, you'll have the two, the towns will already get the, the numbers for the two warrant articles, but they'll then have our certified budget, and then the liaisons are at our meeting, so if there's any change, we will inform our liaisons. And then each town has the open hearing of the warrant. So Dover is...
Dover is two weeks from yesterday.
Two weeks from, yeah, two weeks from yesterday. So again, that's time to present the budgets to the towns. So that's really the window that we have.
I'm sorry, what was Dover's?
Dover's is two weeks from last night, which is...
March 18th.
March 18th. All right, that's it. We have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second? All those in favor? Aye. We adjourn? Thank you.
I believe I can announce the very first step of the sequester. My son lives at White House, he's in the media...